We'll call a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for November 20, 2018, 4:30 PM to order. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda items.
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 2A, conduct a public hearing to consider a resolution approving the reassessments of the 2005 special assessments on Lot 9, Block 1, Lakeside Village Edition. Got something on that, Steve? And that's the question.
Thank you, Mr. President, City Council members. This is a public hearing for the reassessment of this lot in Lakeside Village. We have not received any written or oral comments about this. This is very similar to what we've done in the past with these tax forfeited parcels. I would recommend you open it for a public hearing and can answer any questions anyone may have.
Thanks, Joe. It's a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard? See none? Entertained a motion. Closed public hearing.
I'll offer a motion and offer the resolution to waive the reading, closing the public hearing and adopting the final assessment role for 2005 reassessment of Lot 9, Block 1, Lakeside Village Edition payable over a 10-year period along with a 5.5 simple interest charge of the unpaid balance.
Second. We have a motion and a second to offer a resolution to waive the reading. Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 2B, conduct a public hearing to consider the resolution approving the final plat of the Depot's second edition located at 200 South Valley Street. Do they have anything on that?
Any information on that as far as?
Mr. President, I don't know if anyone else from the staff wants to speak on this. I've met with Dave Schonberg and discussed this with him. We did a review. I did a review of the ownership of the property, which is fairly complicated, but it seems like the plat has been signed by everyone. Mr. Schonberg didn't see any issues with it. And I think it would be his recommendation that the council would approve it, and I see the Planning Commission also recommended that.
Correct.
With that being said, all motion, close the public hearing. Okay, anybody want to be heard out there? Go ahead. Motion to close the public hearing, offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving the final plat of the Depot second edition located at 200 South Valley Street.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to offer a resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 3A, consider a motion to receive and order filed a communication from the mayor and city council. Did you want to?
You want me to read it?
Go ahead.
President and Counselor Shawna Boomgarden, Human Resources Director. So on behalf of Counselor Schultz, I'm just going to read through a communication for all employees for the city. We wanted to take a moment to let all of you know that we are working hard to move us all forward in the selection process of a new city manager. We are reviewing the former job description, looking at options for a selection and interview process. We will be meeting with the PUC to get input on qualities we all want to see in the new manager as we move forward in this very important process. We will not be rushing this process. We want to get it right. We know this is a stressful time for you, but also know we can count on all of you to step up and do your best during this transition. We have hardworking, dedicated department heads along with an interim city manager to steer the ship until this important position is filled. Please reach out to them with any concerns you might have. We will also do our best to make sure you are kept advised with the process in hiring a new city manager to bring our city forward. Any other comments you would like to make, Counselor Schultz?
No, I think this is an important letter just to make sure that our staff know that what we are doing and that we are moving forward. And it takes time. It takes time to get this process done right. We have some things coming up in relation to this process further on in our agenda tonight. So, but thank you for bringing that into agenda, and with that, I'll offer a motion to order this filed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I just have a comment. This letter will be going out to all employees, correct?
Yes.
We'll be sending it out, and it was read here so that we could all, we'll all be signing it then? Is that the?
Do we need to sign it up?
Are we signing or are we just going to?
As long as we're all approving it, right?
Well, I, right, I just, when the issue came up from Counselor Schultz, initially the hope was that everyone in the council and the mayor would join in this communication. And of course, we have to have the open meeting law complied with, so.
Sure.
If you would vote unanimously, if anyone doesn't want to sign this, they could speak up. Otherwise, I think, because all of your names are on there, and it would be considered a joint communication.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 4A, consider receiving the New Ulm Chamber Charter Commission recommendations for the amending the New Ulm Home Rule Charter as set forth in the attached revision. Receive and proposed ordinance number 18-027, fifth series, and the first reading of scheduled for a public hearing on the recommended amendment for Tuesday, December 4, 2018, in order to publication of notice to be public, of the public hearing to occur as prescribed by statute. Roger.
And just to supplement this, Mr. President, counselors. At the last council meeting, the revisions, amendments to the charter were presented as recommended by the Charter Commission. The council has to either accept this as a package or reject it. And the vote of the council has to be not just unanimous of those present, but all of the counselors, all five of you, would need to vote for the amendments for them to be effective. There was concern or questions about the amendments to Section 98, so the council sent it back to the Charter Commission. The commission met and agreed to make some revisions to the provisions in the new Section 98. Previously, this deals with the chief of the fire department. Previously, it provided that the chief would be appointed by the city manager and that all the other fire department officials would be appointed by the city manager, subject to council approval. It was pointed out this was inconsistent with the bylaws of the fire department. The charter, of course, takes precedence over the bylaws as does the city code. But considering how the fire department is managed, the commission decided to amend their recommendation. So Section 98 now would read that the chief of the fire department would, shall be appointed by the city manager, subject to the approval of the city council. The chief of the fire department shall appoint such other fire department officers as may be appropriate and necessary, subject to the approval of the city council. So the other officers would still be appointed by the chief and not by the city manager. Otherwise, all the other amendments that were previously recommended are included in this. The way I've submitted this is to have an ordinance that I will eventually be reading that would adopt the entire charter as amended. So for the first reading of that, the ordinance number 18-027, fifth series, City of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota, an ordinance adopting amendments to the Home Rule Charter of the City of New Ulm. Whereas the Charter Commission was established and its members appointed by the Honorable Michelle Dietrich, Chief Judge of the Fifth Judicial District, on April 6, 2018 pursuant to the city council's resolution and a petition requesting the same. Whereas said Charter Commission has met and has reviewed the existing Home Rule Charter of the City of New Ulm. And whereas said Charter Commission has recommended amendments to the Home Rule Charter as set forth in the printed compilation entitled Home Rule Charter of the City of New Ulm, Minnesota, 2018 revision. And whereas the city council finds that it's appropriate and necessary to amend the Home Rule Charter as recommended by the Charter Commission. And whereas the city council has authority to amend the Home Rule Charter by ordinance pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Section 410.12 subdivision 7. And whereas notice of a public hearing on the proposed amendments has been published and a public hearing on the proposed proposal conducted prior to final consideration by the New Ulm City Council. And whereas the city council has unanimously voted to adopt the following amendments at its regularly scheduled meeting, this should be December 4, 2018. We'll need to amend that because that's when the vote would be.
Yep, okay.
I'm just, yep, so I'm sorry.
I said it's set forth on the agenda. I didn't look, I didn't see the action from.
Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the City of New Ulm, Section 1, that the Home Rule Charter of the City of New Ulm, Minnesota, 2018 revision, is hereby adopted as the Home Rule Charter of the City of New Ulm, Minnesota. Section 2, that this ordinance shall take effect and be in force 90 days from and after its adoption, approval, and publication unless within 60 days of publication, a petition for referendum is filed with the city clerk, treasurer, finance director that meets the requirements set forth in Minnesota statutes, Section 410.12 subdivision 7. Section 3, that until this ordinance takes effect, the existing Home Rule Charter of the City of New Ulm shall remain in full force and effect. And then there will be a public hearing scheduled for the December 4 meeting of the council. It's mandatory because we've made this revision that there has to be another public hearing, but the public hearing can be at the same time as you vote on the amendments. So hoping we can get it all done at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion? See none? Entertained a motion to receive it?
I'll offer a motion to receive the New Ulm Charter Commission's recommendations for amending the New Ulm Home Rule Charter as set forth in the attached black line underlying revision revised proposed ordinance number 18-027, fifth series, at first reading, scheduled public hearing on the recommended amendments for Tuesday, December 4, 2018, in order publication of notice, public hearing to occur as prescribed by state statute.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 4B, number one and number two, consider ordinance amending Section 4.52 of the city code, the City of New Ulm, relative to the deregulation, deregulate the number of taxi licenses. Second reading of ordinance number 18-028, fifth series, and a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-028, fifth series.
So I'll offer a motion then to waive that second reading and to adopt that ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
As many taxi companies as we want now, right?
Yeah. 30 days after publication.
30 days after publication. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 4C, number one and two, consider ordinance amending Section 2.99 of the city code, the City of New Ulm, relative to scheduled city fees, second reading of ordinance number 18-029, fifth series, and a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-029, fifth series.
As long as I'm on a roll, I'll offer this motion to waive this reading and adopt this motion for our sec, for our city fees as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 4D, consider a motion for professional design services to prepare requests for the proposals for replacement of the Outdoor Performing Arts Center in German Park. Tom.
Thank you, President Schmitz and counselors. At the last meeting, you requested some updated pricing information, and that has been obtained. I also want to just remind the council that, you know, in the early 1990s, the park redevelopment plan was established, and this is what the amphitheater concept was back then. It wasn't constructed in the 90s with the hardened surfaces and the accessible, accessibility. So the request this evening is simply to go out for, to put an RFP out for design services and to receive those proposals and then consider hiring a firm to design the project over the course of the winter.
I'll make a comment on it. I mean, I was unable to attend the Park and Rec Commission meeting, and at the last meeting, I was the one that actually asked it to be tabled. I wanted further information on today's numbers. We did receive those. At this point, I don't have any problem with us moving forward to get some RFPs out, get some documents, detail costs, and see the final number, what this is going to cost the city.
We're not committing to anything at this point. We're just basically getting, getting requests out.
Getting requests out.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
With that being said, I'll authorize, or motion to authorize professional service, design services to prepare and solicit requests for proposals, to create construction documents, detailed cost estimates for the Outdoor Performing Arts Center replacement project, German Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I guess I have, well, this would satisfy our moving forward far as the money that's being offered.
I would say yes, President Schmitz. This is first, step one, is to get a community design approved, and so there will be further actions presented to you in the future to authorize the design, accept the design, and then take a new look at the pricing along with the potential donations that will be coming in over the next few months.
Okay. I guess I'm just going to make a comment. I was at the National League of City Conference about a week or so ago, and one of the work sessions that I sat in on was to do with prioritizing budgets. And one of the things they pointed out is when we look at a budget, we should look at needs and not wants. There's a lot of things we want, but we don't probably need. The end, what I'm getting at, though, in this particular case is this park is, to me, a need. We really need to do something. We've got people that are willing to step up and put some bills on a tree that we can shake down to help us out, and I really like that idea, and they ought to be thanked for it. And if we have to do, we know, like, Center Street needs to get done, and maybe Center Street doesn't have to be done right away. Maybe that's a want. We want to do it. And once we get our committees and everything together and get a design of where we really want to go, we'll have more facts there, too. So I think if we take the baby steps going down here, I think we can accomplish everything and have everything what we really need. Let's just put it that way, so.
I agree with that completely. There still remains $200,000 in this year's budget of 2018 for the Herman Heights retaining wall and slope stabilization project. That certainly can be tabled, the project, and you still have $200,000 in the Park and Rec fund balance.
I actually agree with President Schmitz. He actually stole it for the next time Tom was going to be here. I was going to use that, that same principle on it. What's a need? What's an emergency for the project to get done? So I think we'll move forward with it.
And I hope that our donors hang in there with us. You know, we went through 10 years of some pretty tough economic times where we couldn't do a lot. We, we sat at this, around this table and cut a million dollars one year in our budget because we, we didn't have any money, and we're, you know, we're starting to come out of that, and, and now that we finally have some time to do a few things, you know, we're inching our way forward, and we're trying to get back to where we can do some things. And, and we're trying to get there, and we will get there, and this is an important part to a lot of people in our community, and, and we, it's a central part of our community. So we'll get there. We will get there, and so hang in there with us, donors. We'll, we'll get there. So we'll figure it out.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Good. Mr. Schmitz, I'm on the committee for the Herman Heights Hill project. There's at least one other committee member in the audience. When you say there's 200,000 in the budget for that project, that's going to stay in the budget? It's not going to be used for this, is it?
There's, there was 200,000 in the 2018 budget earmarked for the Herman Heights retaining wall project. That project's not going to be delivered in 2018, and so that 200,000 remains in the fund balance of 215, the Park and Recreation Department fund balance.
To answer your question, Roger, where I'm coming from is if we need to tackle some money, I'm willing to.
Okay, just, just on the committee, what we'd been hearing was that Herman Heights is a safety issue. This wall might collapse, that it's not safe for people to be mowing it. So if you're looking at needs and concerns, perhaps that has some urgency as well, because I don't think that German Park is going to collapse on anyone. But anyway, just, I didn't know if money was getting shifted around here, but I just thought as a committee member, I would point that out. Thanks, Tom.
One more item I'd like to mention to the council, reiterate the fact that the financial snapshot here, the $25,000 local organization pledge has potential for increasing along with the $1,000 private local pledge. The organization and the individual have told me multiple times that there's a potential for those pledges to be increased. And I think with some momentum in getting the design established, I, I think the financing and the fundraising will come together.
Great. Let's see what happens.
Thank you.
Pass on our comments to them from what you heard tonight.
I will.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Item 5A, consider resolution regarding the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust liability coverage options for 2019 to not waive the monetary limits of the municipal tort liability established by the Minnesota Statute 466.04, accepting liability coverage limits of 1.5 million from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, effective January 1, 2019, and authorize the city manager to execute the waiver for and on behalf of the City of New Ulm.
This is something we do on an annual basis. I'm going to offer the resolution and waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
Yeah, resolution.
Aye. Aye.
Oops, sorry. We got a motion and a second to offer a resolution, waive the reading. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item 5B, consider recommendation from Personnel Committee approving the general wage adjustments for the non-unionized, part-time, and full-time city employees. Shawna?
Thank you, President Schmitz, Counsel Shawna Boomgarden, Human Resources Director. The Personnel Committee and I met last week, talked about the wage increase of 2.2%. That goes along with what the Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners and clerica workers is, and it is also what our Ask Me Union will be receiving for an increase is also 2.2%. Surprisingly enough, the minimum wage is also increasing 2.2%, so that is why we are making that recommendation, effective January 1, 2019. We did have 2.5% in the budget, so we do have the money to give that increase. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope, thank you.
I'll offer the motion approving the general wage adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, nope. Motion carries. Item 5C, consider resolution, accept donations offered to the City of New Ulm Park and Recreation Department. Okay, being a Park Board member, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, to accept the following donations to the City of New Ulm for the Park and Rec Department. The Herman 5K race sponsorship, $150 from Klosse Mechanical, $150 cash from August Shell, $150 cash from Mike Collision and Repair Tire Center, $150 cash from Aaron's Heating and Air Conditioning, the strap, trap, and skeet range improvements, $15,000 from the Sioux Valley Young Club, $5,000 from the Isaac Walton League Chapter, and $1,000 cash from the Lost Dog and Fox Hunters Club, and park benches, $3,000 cash from the New Ulm Optimus Club.
Thank you. I'll second the motion, although I don't think that last one's correct. I sit on the Optimus Club. We don't donate to park benches. So I believe that was to Park and Play Day or something like that, or for kids organizations, right?
Those are for three benches that will go in three different playgrounds in three different parks for children, their parents, and grandparents.
Okay. I think so.
Do we have a motion? Yep.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second to offer a resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Letters will be mailed in the morning.
Good job, Mayor. Item 5D, consider resolution, accept donations of a splash pad offered to the City of Park and Rec Department. Tom.
Thank you, President Schmitz and counselors. You have before you an offer from Ms. Barbara Haroldson to do what she has done in the City of Red Wing this year, and that is to fund an approximate $115,000 splash pad of professional installation with commercial industrial components. If someone else will prepare the site and handle the utility infrastructure that we estimate here locally at approximately $21,000.
This is really a wonderful donation to our, our city and something that every little three-year-old or two-year-old will love in our community.
Five-year-old.
What's that?
Five-year-old.
And five-year-olds, yeah, that's true.
And adults.
And probably a few adults, too. Everybody chasing around their little grandkids or kids, so. So Tom, talk to us about what you're thinking about, what the Park and Rec has talked about with this.
The Park and Recreation Commission has unanimously made this recommendation to you. The staff has reviewed our 40, approximately 40 park units, and we've narrowed it down to three that the staff has, say, may be possible, including Harmon Park, Nell's Park, and Riverside Park. Of those three parks, only one has a restroom facility, which is Harmon Park. And the Park and Recreation Commission thought that that would be important, an important amenity to have nearby a splash pad. So that may, you know, kind of narrow the staff and commission recommendation for site location to be Harmon Park. So the plan would be to go out for design services over the course of the winter and retain a firm. There's a number of Upper Midwest firms that install these splash pads and then have it constructed in the summer of 2019.
Did Park and Rec talk about adequate parking? Because this will bring in more, more people to that park area, obviously.
Yes, Harmon Park, our central athletic park, as opposed to German Park being the central, you know, entertainment park. Yes, there's a lot going on presently at Harmon Park, and this will add to it, but it's centrally located. Park and this will add to it, but it's centrally located, it's not next to the two waiting pools at Lincoln and Washington Parks, granted, it's not up on the hilltop where some people would like to see it, although we don't have a restroom facility in a park up on the hilltop except for Herman.
Right.
And so, you know.
My question, Tom, are we accepting it tonight or are we deciding here's where it's going?
That does not have to be decided tonight, no, no, just the authorization to enter into, to accept Barbara's offer and then authorize staff to begin the planning process.
Anybody having questions for Tom?
Tom, just food for thought, somebody mentioned about parking and with the softball fields and athletic things going on, there's not a whole lot of parking, right, and you probably, most of us are gonna probably have to drive our grandchildren to the splash pad, any consideration even of German Park?
We did and have looked at German Park and there's potential real estate there for it to be placed between the playground and the band shell, the playground and the women's restroom building, and so site location, we're not deciding tonight.
Okay, just food for committee to think about.
Yes, we have looked at that and it is a possible site.
Thank you.
Just to back up a little bit on what a splash pad is, as the council action form denotes, it's an aquatic play feature that has no standing water, so that there's no water depth and there's no need for lifeguards, so imagine a playground basically with water features spraying up out of the ground, and there are two broad categories, a recirculating splash pad and a non-recirculating splash pad, a recirculating is more expensive and requires filtration and sanitation like chlorine, where the water is recirculated, a non-recirculating splash pad is less expensive to develop and to maintain and short bursts of mists and small volumes of water spray out and then end up draining into the storm sewer, so that's a little bit of background on what a splash pad is and what the two broad categories are.
How long is, what's the dimensions of that park?
This is approximately a 2,000 square foot splash pad in Red Wing.
And what type of setup do they have, do they have the recirculating or do they have?
They have a non-recirculating.
They haven't built the one in Red Wing, right?
Yes, yes, it's constructed in 2018.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is that a sand surface or is it a hard surface?
It's a hard surface, well, yeah, and there's, it's like a pool deck, there's a number of different surface possibilities, you can have the poured-in-place type rubber surface or you can have a swimming pool deck type surface or, there's a number of different surfaces and so that would be, you know, fleshed out through the design process over the course of the winter.
And I'm assuming we can find 21,000 somewhere in our funds to take this wonderful offer and run with it, correct?
I would say yes, there's also an opportunity for the public, or for the private sector to partner with this project, there may be one or more individuals or organizations willing to partner with this, wishing to, desiring to, fund the, you know, the base structure and the utilities and you never know, maybe there's another chunk of change that comes in to make it 3,000 square feet instead of 2,000 square feet.
That'd be better, yeah, I think it'll be used by a lot of kids.
You said optimists are in favor of children.
Optimists love kids, they do.
There you go.
They do. With all this information, I'm gonna go ahead and offer a resolution, waive the reading to accept the donation of the splash pad valued at 115,000 from Barbara Haroldson, provided the city or other entity funds, fund site preparation and utilities estimated at 21,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion?
A big thank you to Ms. Haroldson.
See a nun, finance director, please call and roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries, thank you Tom.
Thank you.
Item 5B, consider authorizing the city manager to sign any applicable documents and move forward with recruitment options, Shawna?
All right, President Schmitz and counselors, I'm just gonna talk today about the different options that we have, recruitment options that we have available to us, I'll just go down the list here, the first option is we received two proposals from executive search firms, the first one was from David Drown Associates and the second one was from Hugh Life, they are two of the most commonly used recruiters from central and southern Minnesota, I'm gonna talk a little bit about their process, they have very similar processes, so the first step in the process would be information gathering, so that would be going through the job description, talking to the city counselors individually, talking to department heads about what their wants and needs are for a city manager, if you would like, if the council would like any other people to be interviewed from the city or Public Utility Commission, they can also be involved in the process, that's up to the council, we'll also review salary information at that time, the next step in the process would be development of a position profile and what that is, is really an advertisement that customized for the City of New Ulm to, you know, show them in a positive manner and that'll be given to prospective candidates, so a draft will be completed and that will be presented to the council for approval, next step would be advertisement and recruitment, so they, the recruiter will make contact with job seekers not actively seeking jobs, they will also do a local and national search and they will pay for all the advertising fees, once we do that, that'll take approximately a month of advertising, we will, they'll do the initial screening and review, so they'll choose 10 to 12 semifinalists, David Drown Associates also does a video interview with all of the semifinalists, they'll also do a personality index and they'll gather all that information and the council will be able to review the video interview, the personality index, the cover letter and the resume of those 10 to 12 semifinalists, the council will then, from there, select approximately five finalists and they will do background checks on the five finalists, they'll also do an intellectual profile that includes verbal reasoning, mathematical and logical reasoning and overall mental aptitude, and then selection will presume and you can have department heads available, you can have the community available through a meet and greet, it's kind of up to the council on what you want to do there, and then they'll prepare all of the interview questions, we'll go through that interview process, once we make a decision on who we want to go with, they'll make the offer, negotiate the terms and then there's a 24-month guarantee with David Drown and Associates and an 18-month guarantee with Hugh Life, so it's kind of the overall process if we would go with a recruiter, the other options that we have available to us would be to invite these search firms to come to the next meeting or a later meeting to talk more about what they offer, we, you could also direct myself to conduct the recruitment for the city manager in-house, we could call other search firms to receive more proposals, if you have any other options that you would like to talk about or if you want to think more about what you want to do with this, we can table it for further discussion until the next meeting.
Mr. President, I just have a question, Shawna, when you mentioned the guarantees, the 24-month and the 18-month, if the person were to terminate or be terminated before that, what does that mean, they would refund the fee or what happens?
Nope, they'll complete another search without the service fees, they'll just only, only have actual expenses like the advertising expenses and travel expenses, is what that means.
Can you talk about the cost of the two firms?
Yes, the David Drown and Associates, it's an all-inclusive cost of 18,000 and for Hugh Life, the basic, or the search fee is 16,500, but that doesn't include the expenses, which is advertising and the travel expenses, which could be up to 3,750 dollars and it doesn't include background checks, which will be 675 dollars per candidate, so that's gonna be approximately probably 21,000 to 23,000 altogether.
Mr. President, when I spoke with Dave Unmack, who is Executive Director of our League of Minnesota Cities, who prior to becoming, having that position, he actually did do some of these searches for city managers in Minnesota for a variety of different cities and he gave us some advice, I called him and I said, "Give us some advice on do we hire for this process or do we try to do it on our own?" and so just give us some advice that I can pass on to the rest of our city council and here's the comments that he made, he said, "I'll just throw a bunch out and you can pass it on to your group" and here's his comments, first he said, "Wait till after January 1st," he said, "The holidays is not a good time to recruit," so that was his first bullet point, and second bullet point was, "Search firms are good and that there are no open meeting law violations to worry about, they deal with sensitive information better than local folks do, they usually guarantee if the employee leaves within two years, as we just learned, that they'll do the second search usually for little or no fee, they also do the vetting, which is nice, they set up the interviews, they give you the interview questions, the cost estimate as we learned is around 18,000 to 20,000, if it's done local, or the third bullet is if local, there can be concerns about a lot to take on for the local HR person, lots of local opinions from local sources, can also save you money, there's more local control, if you go that route, you should have a local committee set up to take on this project, cities can ask for, or the fourth bullet was, cities can ask for a local package, it can be set up by us, parts of it, it's where you can ask for, we could do part of it and the company can do another part of it, like we could do, they could do the search and then we could take over after that, they, he also recommended what we could do now is we, we could have Shawna, and she's already done quite a bit of this, have a salary analysis done of areas city managers and what they're making, the length of service, what they earn now, so we kind of have an idea what, where the salary ranges are for our area and we should not have a salary range put down, but have a range, which we kind of know that, that we should all should have, or I think we did this with our PUC manager, but have a market sheet created and a chamber could help us with that, for people that don't live in our area about what New Ulm's all about and what services and what we have in our community, so those are some recommendations from our executive director, so, so, good and bad on both sides, so, I thought about this a lot in my own and I kind of went both ways, 'cause there, you know, this day and age, there's a lot of information out on the internet, a lot of people, I think you're right, a lot of people aren't gonna apply for, during the holidays, they're gonna wait till after the first of the year, if they want to change careers or they want to move up, maybe they're an assistant city manager and they want to move up and they're probably not gonna do that during the holiday, I lean more towards going with a search group to really get out there and find that person that's gonna move our city forward and do that digging and find that right person, so, I don't know, I'd be curious to see what other people think, so.
I have one question, Shawna, maybe you know, maybe you don't, if we decide tonight, you made the one comment, holidays, before we even ready to get started, we're past the holiday, aren't we? Thanksgiving's, I mean, this week, or?
So, David Drown Associates actually gave a tentative timeline, so we could do the information gathering part during the holiday seasons and they wouldn't recommend advertising until January 9th, they have January 9th through February 6th.
Okay.
For advertising and they have a potential start date of April or May for a new city manager to come in.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just my little opinion here showing up, for Shawna to do all this work, I know she can do it, but we also have, I don't want to say a boatload of police officers that we need to replace because there's been a lot of changes in our police department with some moving to the sheriff's department and some moving up and some retiring, she's gonna be a very busy human resource person just with the police department, so I'm...
In my mind, I would just assume, let's start the process, call it what you may, searching, headhunter, whatnot, and move forward, especially with the timeline you just gave me, that goes along with what you said with the league, so let's move forward.
I guess I, I too like the idea of hiring a firm to do it, I think there's a lot of communication that's gonna have to go back and forth and there'll be somebody to direct that and not that we can't do it, but, you know, between open meeting laws, we want everybody to get the same message and they, they're experienced at this.
They know what they're doing.
Yeah.
That's their job.
That's right, and I, I think it puts an extra burden on our human resources to have to do all of that work, it's gonna be a lot of work, I think there's a lot of work involved in it and having an outside person just will give us a different perspective too.
I guess my thoughts are, I would like to maybe table it tonight and have a workshop as the councils together and visit with, as all of the council together, you know, to hear our views and some thoughts and how we can move forward for the future, I mean, we've got the holidays right now, if we table it, have a workshop, we can still, we might be just a couple of weeks off in January before they would send it out, but then we can think a little bit more about it and ask more questions and thoughts on it.
I guess my question would be, what do we want out of that workshop, what are you, what are you looking for in that workshop?
Well, if we would spend all this money upfront, if we have a candidate or two that might be in-house and then we just spent, you know, 20,000 and we might have had somebody that he or she within our city look, you know, you know, and if we would want to discuss any options, possibly.
I guess my thought would be that, you know, we may have some candidates in-house that might be interested in that, but I still think that this is, for this job, we would still want to do a search outside, I think they would have to compete with everybody that's out there, I mean, that's just my thought, I think for this top position, I think that's very common to just, I mean, we certainly might have somebody in-house and it might be that person, but they probably will have to compete with the outside, I think that's...
I agree with Counselor Fisher, if there is somebody in-house, fantastic, same competition.
They'll rise to the top.
Do you have a preference on which company based on what your knowledge is and your investigation?
I would go with David Drown and Associates.
That's the one that you said was 18,000?
Was 18,000.
That's a contract?
Yes, and it includes all expenses and all fees are, it's a flat fee, it includes everything and they'll create that market sheet that you were talking about, Counselor Schultz also.
I guess where I'm leaning is, and I guess I've said this before, I don't want to rush it and I'd like to see a work session, I think we can, as the council, we can talk more, we can, you can get the numbers for us of what the salary ranges should be, me being on personnel, Lisa being on personnel, I'd like to have more input from everybody, I don't want that personnel comes and says, "This is what we're gonna do," I'd really like to get down and have a work session and talk about all of our options and the comment Larry made is, "I'm in no way ready to spend 20,000 to hire somebody, I know you're busy, but with the times and changes and one of the things, I'm gonna go back to the conference, I was just at, it's just, times have changed, just because this one does it that way, this one does it that way, we're in New Ulm, we can do what we want, we don't have to follow everybody, you know, they always say, "Look outside the box," maybe we better step outside once and do it something, we don't have to be to follow everybody else, we should be able to come up with ideas and do things on our own. We should be able to come up with ideas and do things on our own that, you know, I just, I, I got a problem spending $20,000 bucks. I just, I think with the technology, you got the League of Cities, you got the National League of Cities, I've been on them, you got the National League of Cities with over 200 some applications or job, jobs out there, you got the League of Cities of Minnesota here with 185 jobs on the internet. You can't tell me that people that are looking for a job aren't out there on their cell phone. I know I was, that's how I find them. It just, I think we're spending money we don't need to spend. I mean, there's, maybe we need some help to research afterwards, whatever, like Les says, talking to Dave. I, I got a little hangup with it. I think we need a work session to really iron things out personally. I'm not ready to make that big jump yet and spend money.
You know, maybe when we, we could invite Dave to the work session or something, you know, and hear from him, you know, firsthand in processes. I know Les talked to him in person, but-
I was there with Les.
Okay.
We ran into him down at the National League of Cities and we asked him to-
Yeah, we kind of cornered him and said, "Help, give us your opinion, one or the other, just tell us what you think."
And this is up to the council. I mean, obviously I can do it. I, I, it's, I am busy and it will be a lot of work and, you know, there will be a lot of opinions from a lot of different people, but, and I will be, you know, taking on a lot, but I can do it, so this is up to the council.
There's been comments that, you know, you'd be hiring your own boss, that's really not true. I mean, you know, the, the load ain't coming on to you for making that decision, the whole city council's going to make the decision. It's not, in my opinion, is, it's not even going to be us as the city council making decisions. I'd like to see a meet and greet, I'd like to involve the Public Utility Commission, I'd like to involve all the department heads and give everybody a chance on whoever the finalists are. I'm not saying that we have to do in-house or whatever. I think we need to go out and look, but I don't think we have to really spend $20,000 to do it. That person that we're going to hire is going to be somebody that we know that's going to work within this community and be a great person. This is what we're really looking for.
Did we hire one the last time?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember the meet and greet.
Yep.
Right.
I think, I think we want to do all those things you're talking about, Charlie. I think what the firm offers is that it offers, offers a coordinated effort and for Shawna to take it on or for us as a committee, I don't think that we have the time, and I think it's money well spent, to have that expertise to guide us through this process. And I think that we're going to have as much say as we want in that process and only the firm's going to be guiding us to do that. And does it come with a cost? I think it does, but I think it's going to be a much more organized process. I think that we'll get much better consensus and I think we'll get more involvement. If we want involvement, they'll coordinate that involvement and-
Especially it sounds like when they start out right away by sitting down with all of us, one by one, and saying, "What do you want?" And a new city manager and, and, and who else do you want us to meet with? When they talked about not only us, PUC, Chamber people, who else do you want us to talk to to, to look at? Who do you want this person, what are the personality styles are you looking for? And then that's who they go out and try and find and-
In my mind, that's your work session.
That is your work session.
I mean, that, that's your work session. Here's what we want.
And they facilitate that and sometimes you need that facilitator to really draw out what people want because they can't sit in a group like this and really say, but they'll be able to tell that person. So I guess I can see, I don't know, I kind of really lean heavily on, on having somebody to coordinate that effort. Not that Shawna can't, I think she would do a great job. But I think it's a, it's a, a lot of work and I think it's going to take our time, too. It's going to still take our time, but to coordinate those efforts.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I want to, just, just wanted to clear up something, especially for Shawna. No way did I make it sound, I mean, I hope it didn't sound like-
No.
-I didn't think you could do it, but I just know you've got a lot of work ahead of you and I agree with Counselor Fisher, but you said it a lot better than I did.
You know, I don't, I don't have a problem with taking the process slow if we want to, you know, I don't know what tabling is, is going to do for us, you know, if we want to have a work session and to talk about it more, but I think we do want to take it slow. I don't think we want to rush and I think we want to wait until after the new year to really get that advertising out there and, and searching for that person. But it also gives us time to start working on some of those behind-the-scenes things.
If we would table it, does that change the contract times that we just talked about or that you just mentioned, or is that still in play?
Ah, the tentative timeline would change, yes.
It would change. So I get nervous with that tentative timeline on that contract, puts a new city manager in May, now towards the end of May, and I really don't know if I want to keep moving that all the way into June. It's starting to push that pretty far down the table, so I, I mean, we do say in our letter to our employees that we want to get it right, but six, seven months down the road is getting pretty far, so we're not rushing.
Right. But our next meeting is what, the beginning of December. I mean, this is a late, kind of a late meeting for, you know, so there's only really a couple weeks, so if we would have a work session in between that, people wanted to talk and still hash some things out, I'm okay with that, but-
Yeah.
-it'd probably be delaying it two more weeks. Yeah, about two weeks.
Yeah.
I guess I would, I'd like to see a work session. Personally, I think we need to really know where we're all headed for and I'm not convinced yet. And I don't think we're going to fall apart waiting another week or another month or whatever it has to be. I think we got good department heads, it's been done in the past, we're going to be in good shape.
Well, I'm going to throw out a motion to table it and we'll schedule a work session and bring it back to hopefully the December 4th meeting as to what our decision is.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? I'll second it to take a vote. All in favor, say no, or say aye.
Aye.
Close, no?
No.
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 Close, she carries.
No.
What?
What?
Well, I mean, no, I mean it.
Motion fails.
Yeah, sorry about that. So, I guess we're back to, offer a motion.
I feel, I feel pretty confident that I, I really want someone to guide us to, through this process. So I am going to make a motion to move forward with a firm and I don't know, do we have to name a firm now? Can we?
Yeah, I think we're in order to do it.
Okay.
Proposal loaded.
Okay. I got to forget the name of the, what's the, not Hugh, but what's the other one?
David.
David, David Drown and Associates to get the proposals or to hire them as the firm to do the search for the city manager.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, any more discussion? See you done? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close, no?
No.
No. Motion carries. With no more business, meeting adjourned.